Oh, yep. Yes, sir.
All right. Broadcasting now.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Call our Tuesday, April 28th Agenda Session to Order. If there's no objections, we let the minute stand as approved. Let's see. First order of business ordinance is on first reading. Madam Clerk, would you read 7A, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending ordinance number 13473, known as the Fiscal Year 2019 to 2020 Operations Budget Ordinance, so as to appropriate $22,000 from the Department of Economic and Community Development to the Chattanooga Area Chamber of Commerce for processing small business COVID-19 coronavirus bridge grants.
Okay. Do we have any questions about this? One of the reasons, and I've noticed Jermaine Freeman is on, and I'm sure Ms. Williams is on. Is there any having, is there any having questions about what this is? Councilwoman Burge.
Yeah, I assume this is a processing fee.
No, why don't we just go ahead and get, I see.
You want Donna?
Yeah, bring up, yeah, bring up Ms. Williams.
Actually, do not see her at the moment, Mr. Chair.
Bring it, bring up Jermaine. He can explain it much better than I can.
Jermaine, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Hey, perfect. Thank you, Councilwoman Burge, for the question. And so the additional $22,000 is for, is to fund five more small businesses that got their in that were approved by the grant committee if there was money available. So our grant review just went ahead and approved them, basically saying, hey, if we get additional money, then these businesses will be approved, and this would bring the program to a close.
Okay. That makes sense.
You good?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Coonrod. Glad you could make it.
Yes, thank you. I was having a little technical difficulties. Okay, my question is, so we're gonna, if it passes, give them $22,000 to fund five more people. So we're giving them $4,400 a piece approximately. Now, the other businesses that applied and got awarded, were they given that same amount of money as well?
No, they, so the businesses would not get $4,400 a piece.
Okay.
Businesses are gonna get either, it's sort of a mix between $5,000 or $2,000.
Okay.
Right. And so all of the businesses that have been awarded up until this point, which is approximately 140 something, they have all either received $2,000 or $5,000. Yeah, the same would apply for these last five.
Okay. And do you have a breakdown per dish, by our district of the people, amount of businesses that got awarded, and who those businesses were?
Yes, and I will share that with all of you this evening.
Okay.
You good, Councilwoman?
I'm good. Now, woman, one more question.
Yes.
Now, when will we be updated about the loan portion of, because we had the grant, and then we had the loan?
Yeah, great question. So we had over 200 applicants for the grants. And so that took a tremendous amount of staff time. So we are now processing the loan applications. And so we should have updates for the loan applicants next week. And then, at that point, once we get word to all of the small businesses that were approved for loans, then I can get you all an update for the loans, please.
Okay. But do you have the number of the amount of people that applied for the loan?
The, at the, I don't have the exact number right now, but the last time I saw, which was about three days ago, there were over 130 applicants for the, for the small business loans.
Okay. So with these, the five businesses here, were they not able to apply for the loan?
They applied to the grant before the grant portion portal closed. And there are several businesses that applied for grants that also applied for loans. Now, as we do our follow-up, some of those businesses may decide that they don't want a loan anymore. But that's, you know, we will discover that through this process.
Okay. So just for clarity on my end, the five businesses here applied for the grant before the portal closed. We just ran out of money.
Just ran out of money. That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Legford?
Thank you, Chairman. I believe Councilwoman Coonrod answered my questions exactly. So thank you.
Good. All right. Councilwoman Burge?
Thank you, Chair. Jermaine, I would definitely just echo what Councilwoman Coonrod said. The 140-plus businesses that received the, that received the grant, I would like to know, definitely would like to know if you can give them to them by district, what districts they are in, and so we'll know. But I also would like to know how many people actually applied for the law, for the grant.
Sure. So I don't have the exact number, but it was over 200 that applied for the grant.
Over 200?
Over 200. Yes, sir. And, and as I, as I said to, as I mentioned to Councilwoman Burge and Councilwoman Coonrod, I will try to get you all a breakdown of the businesses that were awarded in each of your districts.
Okay. And Jermaine, unfortunately, good things a lot of times get some bad publicity. One thing that I've been hearing is that a lot of people that didn't get it, I know sometimes when people don't get things, they kind of feel like it's some, 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 some wrong things that happened, or some distrust there. That's one thing I've been hearing. So can you help us clear that up, too, when you give us the information? Because I'm hearing that a lot of African-American businesses didn't get it, and that they applied for, sent in their information, and also didn't even get a response. And so a lot of times, that perception is out there and left out there. I would love, definitely love you to clear that up for us.
Yeah, I can go ahead and respond to that now, if that's okay.
Go, go ahead, Jermaine.
And so I just, I just got word from, from our staff that we actually had 274 small businesses that, that, that applied for the grant. And we were able to award approximately 140. And then, in terms of your question about, about businesses owned by people of color. So our initial sort of estimate is that over 50% of the small businesses that were awarded qualifies diverse business enterprises. So they are DBEs. Now, the city defines DBEs as businesses that are owned by people of color, businesses that are owned by women, businesses that are owned by people who identify as LGBTQ. It is, it is true that, based on the data that we have so far, the vast majority of those DBEs are businesses that are owned by women, as opposed to businesses that are owned by people of color. So we, you know, we would obviously like to have seen more applications from businesses that are owned by people of color. But I am very proud of the work that we have done in terms of, of seeing more businesses that are owned by women through this process, and those awards being made. And so, so, but, but we're working on that. The other thing that I would say is, I can only, we can only give grants to businesses that apply. And so if you don't apply, then there's no way that we can consider your application. And I will just say that after the council passed your, the second ordinance, the second ordinance vote to, to make this go live, we got over 100 applications within the first 24 hours. So there were a number of businesses that applied for this program, and a number that applied very quickly. But I, you know, to your point, Councilman Burge, yes, we would have liked to have seen more African-American businesses or own businesses apply. But we're very proud of the work that we did to get a number of businesses that are owned by women awarded under, under the program.
Thank you.
You good?
Good.
Councilman Gilbert?
Jermaine, will you give us a breakdown, you give us a breakdown of how many people of color applied, how many state, how many women?
Yes. So, so you, you kind of broke up there. But in, in the initial report that I share with you all later this evening, the initial report will only show the businesses that were awarded. But I can also get you an additional report that will show a breakdown of the businesses that were not awarded, if that helps you, Councilman Gilbert.
Yeah, breakdown of how many of, first, I mean, was.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Councilman Gilbert, your audio is having a little technical difficulties. I don't know if there's anything you can do with it.
Did you hear me at all?
No, it's.
It's awful. You're breaking up.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay. Councilman Mitchell, I'll see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jermaine, if I recall, when we also do recruitment of businesses, whether it be LGBT or women-owned or, or people of color, isn't it true that historically, we've also awarded more of these contracts to businesses with women? Or women owners? I mean, I can remember when, when, actually, back to James McKissick was doing a recruitment effort, and it seems to me that we had the same. And I'm not saying that's a problem at all. I think it's a good accomplishment. I'm just, it just feels like something about our process trends in that direction. And, and, and it might not be our process, it might be the hustle of the business owners. But I, I, I just would, would like to know if, if that's a trait that sort of goes through, throughout the city with our process of recruitment for businesses.
Well, I, I think that's a great question, Councilman Mitchell. And what I, what I think is, is happening is when we, when, when we as a society often think about business owners, we don't consider the fact that they're, that it very well could be that there, there are a lot of women business owners who don't necessarily get the attention that they should get in our community. And I think throughout this process, what we discovered is there are a lot, a lot of women business owners who are doing everything they can, just like every other business owner, to, to support their small business, and to keep people on payroll, and to make sure that rent gets paid. And, and they got involved early and often in this process, and really made, made their, their voices heard. And we were, we were happy to do whatever we could to fund them. Now, at the same time, you know, I think that we, we want to see more small business owners that are African-American. We want to see more small business owners that are LGBTQ. We want to see more small businesses, business owners that are Latinx. And so there's still work that we need to do as a community in order to make sure that entrepreneurship is something that can be enjoyed and experienced by all kinds of people. But I am very, very proud and gratified by the number of small businesses that receive funding through this program that are at least 50% owned by women.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I would agree with you. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is, and I, and I don't, as far as where I'm going with this, I don't want to draw out the conversation because it's maybe a little bit aside. But is there something we can do in the future that sort of the council can, you know, through the eyes of staff, of course, because they're the ones in control of this process, go down this road a little bit further, and, and maybe somebody within the administration has some ideas on, on, on ways to recruit where, where people of color who can become, you know, I get, I guess a woman-owned business could be a person of color also. So, but, but the, but is there a way that we could, you know, sort of hear thoughts from the administration at some point on what, you know, to follow up on what Jermaine just said, and, and come up with some ideas on how, how we can try to do more?
Absolutely. In fact, I think this will be a great topic for Councilman Oglesby to have in his committee. Councilman Oglesby, if you would get with Mr. Freeman, and possibly in the next coming months, anyway, schedule just a discussion around recruitment and, and ideas to, to help this council further that agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair. It's on my agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jermaine. You, you're great, great work.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. It wasn't me. It was all of the ECD staff, led by Sharita Allen, but I appreciate the compliment. But there's a line, share the credit.
Hold on one second, Jermaine. Councilwoman Coonrod, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, after he, yeah, a couple of comments. Thank you, Chair. Jermaine, if you could just help me understand, what do you all mean by people of color?
So people of color is, we, we had applicants that were Asian-American, African-American, Latinx, people of Middle Eastern descent, Iranian-American. We had a number of applicants that were, that were not white.
Okay. Yeah, it just amazes me in 2020 that we still afraid to say black, black people.
Yeah, well, and I, and I did not specify African-American or black people, just because we had people who were, who were not white and who were not black that also applied.
Right. I understand that portion, because you already told us that 50% of the DBEs are women, LGBT, and then you identified everybody else as people of color. So I wanted to make sure I understood the target group that we're all talking about. Is it that we're talking about everybody that's in that melting pot that Mitchell talked about? Or are we specifically saying a target group of people, which are black people? So that's, that's where I get kind of confused at. So, and my other question, out of 274 people that applied, you said 140 of them was awarded a grant, 134 people didn't qualify for the grant. So what is needed to help this additional 134 people get funded, to get grant? Because we're pushing here just only to get five businesses, small businesses addition funds. So what is needed to get the other 134 people?
Well, so, so that's a great question.
About $500,000.
So that's, that's a great question. And I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna say what Councilman Mitchell just said. But, but, you know, I think some of the, the small businesses that weren't approved, and let me, let me, let me say this first. All of the small businesses, the vast majority that applied are facing some sort of economic hardship. But as I'll just remind the council, our mission as, as a grant review committee was to focus in on the businesses that were most impacted by the executive orders. And so the hair salons, the barber shops, the childcare centers that could only serve children of essential employees, restaurants that had to close their dining rooms, gyms, you know, entertainment places. These are all businesses that were either ordered to close under the executive orders, or they were businesses that had a, 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 a large segment of their customers that they weren't able to, to sell to because of the executive order. So for example, in the case of a restaurant, if you had to close their dining room. And so we had other types of businesses that applied, like architectural firms and doctors' offices. And so to the greatest extent possible, we tried to focus this help on the small businesses that were impacted by the executive orders, and that were closed down, or that were, that were disrupted substantially. Does that make sense, Councilwoman Coonrod?
It does make sense. And, and I, I appreciate all the work that ECD has done, Sharita, you, and whomever else helped. But I'm really concerned about our salons and barbers, because the executive order affected them even more so, because they didn't have curbside service like our restaurants. The dining areas were closed, but they still were able to order. They were still able to pick up DoorDash, Grubhub, all that could take the items to people home. They were still making some form of money. Our salons and our barber shop people, they couldn't do that. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, I mean, I don't know if it was priority given to these individuals, or not, it don't matter. We got black and white Latinos, salon and barbers. All, all of them were affected in some kind of way. And I'm just really concerned about those individuals. And I don't think that they were given priority first over somebody who, you know, the line was wrapped around their building doing curbside for food, even though the dining hall was closed.
Well, I could, I could speak to that. So I think, I think that we, we do have to be mindful of the fact that a number of restaurants in our city depend heavily on their dining rooms. And so the, the fact that some were able to do curbside, all, all restaurants weren't able to do curbside. For whatever reason, they couldn't pivot to curbside, and some restaurants just closed down entirely. But, you know, so there were a number of restaurants that either weren't able to do curbside, and there are a number of restaurants that attempted to do curbside. And even if they were making a little bit of money, they weren't making what they were making while they had the dining rooms open. And so, but I will say that when we broke down the number of businesses that were, that received funding, barber shops, beauty salons, and spas, some of those grooming businesses, that was the second largest category of businesses that were approved, behind restaurants. And I don't think that we denied any barber shop or beauty salon that applied. I think that every barber shop or beauty salon that applied for the grant was able to get funding, with the exception of any barber shop or beauty salon that's in the last five of the businesses that you guys are voting for the $22,000 for today.
Jermaine, thanks so much for your comments today. It's been very helpful. Council, great questions. Obviously, there's a lot of energy around this, around this item. So at this time, I think, I don't see any other hands. We'll move on to resolutions. Thank you, Jermaine. We went over items A through H last week, didn't we? Chairman Oglesby? ECD?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair.
Is there any questions? Does council have any questions concerning items A through H? In the essence of time, we'll just, I'll just see if anybody has any questions, and if not, we'll move on. At, and I would just ask the council, when it comes to our six o'clock meeting, would there be any objection to taking D through H as a, as a block, as far as voting? Anybody have any concerns about D through H? Okay, if not, we'll take those as a block. Madam Clerk, let's move to short-term vacation rental application, which would be eight I, please. Would you read that?
Yes, sir. A resolution approving short-term vacation rental application number 20STVR00039 for property located at 2411 Vine Street.
Okay. Councilwoman Coonrod, do you have any questions about that?
No.
No? Okay. Eight J, please.
A resolution authorizing the Chief Human Resources Officer to exercise the option to renew a first option renewal with industrial organizational solutions through May 2021 with an increased amount to include the addition of a written exam for the master police officer in the amount of $7,000 for a total amount not to exceed $107,120.
I see no hands. Okay. Okay, please.
A resolution authorizing a spend limit increase for the existing contract with Karasoff Technology Corporation to provide a SILA software licensing and support for a total increase of $15,785.37 for each contract year beginning contract year May 24, 2019 through May 23, 2020, for a total amount of $250,000.
Any questions? I see no hands. L, please.
A resolution authorizing the Chief Information Officer to renew the city's contract with Smart Homes DBA Smart Systems as providers of systems, automation, and technology installation services for one additional year beginning May 16, 2020 through May 15, 2021, for an amount not to exceed $250,000 per contract year.
Okay. I see no hands.
Mr. Chair, I want to.
Okay.
Yeah, let me make one comment. I really like the form of the Human Resources J. It's a great for, remember we were talking about options and renewals? And, and so what they've done is brought forward this for us to approve. You know, there was some discussion about, do we need to approve? Do we not need to approve? And I love the form of this for, for finance purposes, to show that we, we did approve a second option. I like that so much better than the way they've been doing it. So thank you, HR.
Speaking of HR, we are scheduled for a departmental report, and I think Beverly is going to present. Vice Chair, if you would bring her on, please.
One moment. All right, we should be good.
Ms. Multer, can you hear us?
I can. Hello?
Hello. You're, you're alive.
Okay, great. I just have one, one question. I have my presentation flipped, so I can share my screen. I wasn't quite sure if council would be putting this up on my behalf. Give me your pleasure. I will accommodate.
Please.
Bring up my screen?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
One moment. Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, we can.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you again, Mr. Chair and council members, for the opportunity to present the Human Resources Update for this afternoon. The focus of this presentation is going to be heavily focused on HR's response to the pandemic crisis, and more so give towards our employees across the city. Because the crisis response has become a very, a top priority, and I recognize it's for everyone, but really, more importantly, from a human resources standpoint, because all of our employees are retirees, and others are counting on us to make sure that we're there to support them. So making family life easier was one of our biggest goals. We recognize that we have employees that are either working from home or at home. They're taking care of their children, monitoring schoolwork, helping parents and other family members. So it became crucially important that we focused on four urgent areas. And the areas that we felt was the greatest need, based on feedback that we were hearing and observing from our employees, were, one, in the area of physical health and well-being of our employees; two, fostering connections with our employees remotely; helping our employees with mental health and uncertainty; and also providing information and support relative to their families. Some accomplishment.
Ms. Multer?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure, but we still have the same, the screen you started with. Should we not be scrolling through your different slides?
I'm sorry. Here, just one second. Let me make sure. So I'm on slide three. That's what's showing on my screen. Is that different than what's showing on yours?
We, we have the original first slide.
Okay.
Well, that's what's on mine. Does anybody have anything different?
Yeah.
Same here.
You need to move it forward, Beverly.
Okay. It says, I apologize. It's advancing on my screen. Just one moment, please.
By the way, council, in your, in your folder, your council folder, this presentation is in your folder, if you'd like to follow along there as well.
I'm sorry, sir. Are you still, what, what slide are you going at the moment?
The very first screen that you brought up.
Okay. Are you seeing a second screen that has top HR priorities since January?
No.
No.
It's off to the side.
Beverly, you may try like to stop sharing and then reshare and see if maybe it just froze up for some reason.
There we go.
All right, just one second here. Let me try this again.
We've got a different screen, anyway.
Okay, so the screen you're, you're saying now, is that the top HR priority screen?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, if you bear with me, please, I will review this particular slide again.
Okay.
So, for our HR parties, since we've, since we came into the pandemic, HR's top priority is really trying to make sure that our family, the family life for employees was front and center as being our most important and immediate goal. We had, we recognized that we have employees that were working from home. Oftentimes, they were there taking care of their children, as well as trying to monitor schoolwork, and, or they could have been helping parents and other family members. So because of that, because of the feedback that we received from our employees, and also through observation, there were four urgent areas that we wanted to focus our attention on. The first of which was the physical health and well-being of employees. Second was fostering the connection with our employees remotely; helping employees with mental health and uncertainty, and also providing support and research. Helping employees with mental health and uncertainty and also providing support and resources for their family. A few accomplishments that I would like to highlight that was, that we put into place to help our employees. Was first off, we wanted to look at how could we increase the communications for employees to, to ensure that they were up to date. What was going on. So we created some communication strategies that focused on centralizing communications. On the employee portal on the website. In this portal, we house things. Such as resource materials around policies. There was referencing material and there's also things, helpful information items that we put out there that would be available. For the employees and ease of use without them having to go to multiple locations to where those were at. We also provided motivational tutorials and videos and some articles. And these, these materials were, was geared towards handling, for them handling stress. It focused on mental wellness and change. We also implemented a health, a healthy at home wellness challenge. This particular challenge was sponsored through partnership with Blue Cross Blue Shield with our. With Tyler, who's over at our Well Abandoned Center. So these things were done remotely. And any employee that was participating in that. If they completed it for the entire eight weeks, they walked away with about $1,500 of Blue Rewards points. Toward their, well, towards wellness initiative. We also introduced to them live virtual mindfulness programs, which is free through June 30. This is, this is also another program that is offered through. Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Program. Typically, there is about a $300 charge for those programs. This is being offered for our employees for free, free of charge until June 30. In addition to that, we developed some mitigation strategies where we were implementing protective measures. For maintaining the health of our employees both at home and while they're on site working. Basically, what this did was we wanted to ensure that we are providing them with. Education and the proper personal protective equipment and some measures on how to use these things in place to ensure their safety. Now, as we, regarding our policy enhancements, as we're now preparing to have staff return to work, we're working on policy enhancements that will address protocols for returning to work. Also for stay at home, for stay at home requests and accommodations. So we recognize that there will be challenges as we move forward, but we're working to address all of those scenarios. I think my screen's froze up again. Just one moment. Did the screen advance for you guys?
Did.
Okay, great. All right, some benefit enhancements that we also, that were also put into place. In response to the COVID-19 developments, Blue Cross Blue Shield announced that it was waiving its members' costs for all COVID-19 testing. Now, because the city is self insured, this was, this was, the city was, had the opportunity to opt out. But we chose to participate in this program to ensure that all available employees that were needing tested, that cost was not, was not an issue. So their co-pays were waived. Testing was completely free to them. In addition to the testing, there was also later, later on, as the pandemic continued, there was also an opportunity to waive treatment. Co-pay, the code, the cost share from an employee's perspective for treatment for COVID-19. This particular opportunity is still in place and it will go, it will expire on May 31st. So any of our employees that are experiencing COVID-19 related issues and is needing treatment. There, they will not pay a co-pay or a cost share, excuse me, or they're deductible for any of the treatment. In an effort to expand care to our employees, telehealth services was implemented through Blue Cross Blue Shield. What this provided to our employees was an opportunity to speak with a healthcare provider via phone or virtual for consultation and questions. And this particular offering is good through April 30th and there was no cost for us during that time. Now, as a way to continue to look at providing services because we knew we would need another platform for how we're providing care for our employees. Our Blue Cross Blue Shield, through Blue Cross Blue Shield and a couple of other services, we went out to bid. And we were able, the city was able to offer the telehealth service or telemedicine services to our current city benefit plans. This will go into effect after May. So. This particular contract will be contracted through Physicians Now Services and it will give our employees the 24/7 virtual care and consultation. Monday through Fridays and even through holidays, excuse me, and on the weekends and holidays at zero co-pay for each of our employees and their families. The last benefit enhancement that I will mention is the Family First Corona Response Act. It was signed into law. In March and that particular law goes, is in effect from April 1st through the end of the year. Now, the law provided to all employees. Paid sick leave and expanded family medical leave options. That was paid at a particular portion because the city chose to. Chose to. Still carry our employees in terms of paying them 100% of administrative pay for any, for any COVID related absences. We, this, this particular benefit for us has been modified. We are recognizing employees that are needing the medical leave portion of it. But the pay is not graduated. It is at full pay to ensure the consistency. And this amount that we're paying, that we're offering is at a higher rate than what is required by law. In regards to the safety, health and operational changes that were made during the last few months. We have, we, in working with our purchasing department and some other departments across the board. We've consolidated our efforts and centralized P P P P E for the city. This, the, the inventory that was, that was purchased and collected is actually stored and. In the safety division and they are responsible for ensuring that every department and employees has the proper P P E. We have also enhanced the, our educational process in turn, in response to COVID. Before the order to shelter in place was issued, our health and safety division created some informative training presentation for all employees. And this was shared citywide. Since COVID had come into place, we have now made a lot of that training virtual. And we have created frequently asked questions that employees can use that are for working from home or on premises. And we've also provided some additional P P P P E training and one page pictorial guides for our employees to use. We have, in working with, with our public works divisions and other departments. We have put in, put into place protocols for more regular and extensive cleanings that have been taking place since COVID-19 and those are ongoing today. And we have also begun to set up temperature checking stations. Now, we are postured to begin checking, to have these stations across the city. We have purchased thermometers and we are working on protocols right now for how we will roll that out for the city. There are a couple of items that we're, that I'm working with our city attorney's office on to ensure that. We are in compliance and we'll roll those out just as soon as possible, but they will be before we reopen. This is just a snapshot of the central, the centralized purchases that were, were made. And again, this is through the combined purchasing efforts, the city was able to cost save and also leverage some bulk purchasing by doing this. So as you can see, we purchased 9,000 K95 masks, 150 infrared thermometers. 210 boxes of gloves. 12 rubbing alcohol bottles of rubbing alcohol. Or 59, five gallon pails of hand sanitizers. And then five gallons of the concentrated disinfectant. And of course, if properly diluted, the disinfectant could yield 600 plus gallons. So that is my presentation. I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have of me.
Hey, counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Multer at this time?
Mr. Chair, I don't think you can see our hands at this point.
I, I can, yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead and raise.
I've got, yeah, I've got Councilman Mitchell. And Councilman Ledford now.
I'll yield to Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Councilman. Beverly.
Yes.
Well, it looks like you've been doing a lot of work and, and thank you for, for efforts to take care of our employees. As an employee of the city of Chattanooga, I, I have two questions. One. Have we gotten with the health department and discussed our abilities or potentially our abilities to actually do any testing for our employees?
No, we have, we have been confirmed working through our, our health professionals at our marathon clinic. We have been collaborating with the health department. Now, of course, because test was not available, our clinic is not actively testing. We are partnering with the health department to have, have testing done. Now, of course, I understand that. Currently, there are more tests are available and we are looking at increased opportunity for those tests to happen at the Well Abandoned Center, but today, that has not been the case.
Okay, as of today, what, what, what about tomorrow, next week, next month? We're, it's not going away?
Yes, sir. That's what we're working on. We, we are already in collaboration with the health department and other medical professionals on how we could start this testing here at the city.
Okay, that's, that, that's great news because, I mean, I, I, I think what I'm, what, what, at least I'm seeing and everybody else that gets their. Portion of all the different information that's out there is, there's a lot of asymptomatic out there. I don't know what a lot means, but you know, it's taking temperatures. I mean, I've even seen some things from, I guess it's New York City.
Yes, sir.
That only 30% of those being tested up there even have temperatures. Prove positive. So, so I'd like to see us try to move in that direction. In, in, at least in partnership with the health department or any way we can do that. The other question I have, and, and this is something that. When you mentioned cleaning. What, what are the exact plans or do we need to be making plans ourselves for the cleaning of the council building? The, the, the council chambers, we're getting ready to go back as soon as the chairman will let us and. There's a lot of people that use that room and a lot of people that sit in our chairs when it's our, I guess it's only ours on Tuesday. So, so what type of plans do we have for cleaning? That space especially or in particular so that, and I'm not as worried about others. Giving it to me as I am worried about me giving it to someone else. So what, what, what kind of plans or should we be making our own plans for that?
Well, we would definitely welcome your input, but there are plans across the city where, that we're working on now. What we call the reopen strategies and cleaning was top of the list about what's needed in our, in all of the various facilities and how often. And so that has not been finalized. Our plans are due tomorrow and as soon as we have those. Prepared and ready across the city, those will be communicated. But in the meantime, we welcome any input. If you have some thoughts, we welcome that. But the council chambers is definitely a part of, is on our list.
Well, my input would be every time it's used, we clean it afterwards.
Yes, I understand. And we're following the CDC guidelines and working through. Tennessee OSHA also has put out some guidelines as well. So the safety and health division has been reviewing those and ensuring that what we put into place is in compliance. And so we're not, it will not just be the, once a day, we recognize that while we're bringing people back, that those have to be elevated even more so. So we're putting those type of plans in place.
I believe you. Thank you. Thank you, Beverly. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir. And we'll discuss it in just a few minutes, a little bit further, Councilman Mitchell, but I am, I've been in contact with our clerk. And she is making arrangements to have our chambers and our offices cleaned, sanitized professionally before we return back. And we'll, we'll discuss that in, in just a few minutes. Councilman Ledford, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Beverly, how are you?
Hello, I'm wonderful.
More of a comment, but you said that we as a city did, did not furlough any employee. Is that what I understood? And everyone has received 100% of their salary during this COVID experience?
No, sir, I didn't, I did not mention furlough at all.
Okay. Did we furlough any members of the?
No, no, sir, we did not.
Okay, so we're correct. So we did not furlough and no one, no one, no one had to do without, I, I, the comment I was going to make is. I think that's pretty incredible as a city, as an employer, and I wanted to thank you for the hard work in that and the dedication I know from the mayor's office. I think that it's, it's something to say, working for the city. That you put in such measures not only to protect personal, personal health, safety, but also financial health, financial safety. And I think that's commendable and I appreciate the hard efforts that your office and the administration has done in that regard, protecting the employees of the city of Chattanooga.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, Councilman Byrd.
Thank you, Chairman. Beverly, a question. Do you, do you see us having to furlough in the near future? That was one of the things that I have been hearing whispers about because of the financial burdens that the city are under now. Is it possible that we may have to or that's not even on the table yet?
Well, Councilman, Councilman Byrd, I'm going to defer that question to finance, to Daisy Madison, if she's on the call. Because that has so many budget implication, I think she would be better suited to probably address your, your question.
Okay.
Councilman, is that something that you won't, Ms. Madison brought up, brought in?
If please you can, that would be great because those are just some things that you know, that I definitely hear about that happening. And then when it comes to us.
Vice Chair, would you bring Ms. Madison on, please?
Mr. Chair, Ms. Sullivan had raised her hand. Would you, she may have an answer for this question. Would you like to give her an opportunity to answer?
Yeah, let's hear from Ms. Sullivan.
Sure thing. All right. Is, is everybody okay if we close this presentation out so we can get a better, easier to view the?
Yeah, I think so. Unless, unless somebody's got a question about their presentation.
Okay, let's. Okay, sorry, it just makes a lot easier to be able to run this screen.
Is that Ms. Sullivan, the phone number?
Not sure. Going to double check here. All right, I lost the hand. The hand went away when we were trying to do that. Let me see if she's still on.
Oh, there she is. Ms. Sullivan, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Well, welcome aboard. Did you hear Councilman Byrd's question about furloughing?
I did, did. Thank you for the question. We have looked at the opportunities that would come to our, our declining revenues with furloughing. And I was raising my hand to let you know that Daisy was available. Do it more. So I appreciate Beverly saying that as well and appreciate y'all taking the time to listen to everything that. H R and all of our city departments have been doing regards to COVID over the last couple of months. I, I will say that furlough is something that we have looked at. I hate to say it. It was not a fun discussion to have. Of course, by any means, we, our, our revenues are declining every day. While our revenues come from sales tax and hotel motel tax and we, if we don't have money coming into our bank account, then we, and we don't have money to spend. So as you all know, salaries are our largest expense throughout the city. And so we have had to look at that as an option. To be good fiscal agents for the taxpayers and for you. We have decided at this point that we do not have to, to furlough employees. We are hoping that our revenues will continue to rebound as, as our economy gets back to work. And hopefully this virus will, will not continue to be a threat to all of us. And, and, and our economy will rebound in a way that we do not have to consider that furlough option again. So let's, let's all stay healthy, stay six feet apart, wash your hands, don't touch your face and keep this virus at bay.
We have, we have Ms. Madison on board, Councilman Byrd. You can't hear anything from her?
Ah, yes.
Well, actually, thank you guys for allowing me to speak. Mara has pretty much put it all in a nutshell, but I will, I always like to take the opportunity to emphasize the fact that we are constantly battling the the need to make decisions that are fiscally sound as well as operationally sound. And so in balancing the budget or addressing shortfalls and revenues, it's not all just about laying off people. It's, it's putting other things in place that, such as a freeze because we have budgeted positions that may not be filled. So in terms of an ongoing perspective, we do that sort of stuff, the freeze positions, cut back on cost. And as we are going, so we're making decisions as we go from day to day. And as we prepare, as you can imagine, for the next year's budget. And of course, looking for whatever opportunity we can find to use federal dollars or, or state dollars to get us through the transition with minimal impact to the services as well as to the employees. But I don't have anything to add that's different than what Mara said, actually.
And Ms. Daisy and Ms. Mara, the thing that, the thing that kind of, that kind of gets me in a, in a pickle, so to say, is that you hear so much, you know, on the internet at our council meetings, you hear our workers asking for the $15 raise. And speaking from, just me speaking myself, I wish we can give them a $20 raise, a $30 raise. Our employees work so hard, but I know there's checks and balances. I just get a little bit weirder because so many people you hear, we need a $15 raise, $15 raise, or we need to get to that $15 mark. And if that's not going to happen, it seems like at some point in time, we need to talk to our employees and let them know the situation or the crisis that we're in at this time. And if that was being considered and this tragedy has turned a different eye to what we were going to do, I think that definitely needs to be explained to our employees so that they don't think this council is not hearing them. Because some of my colleagues I do know would love our employees to get to that level of financial strength that they would want to get to. But just if we can't do it, that's understood as well. But at some point in time, I would like to see them there. The other thing is when it comes to furlough, by spending money on things that may not be as needed right now, I definitely want to make sure we're looking at that. And later on, if a furlough do come up, I will want to be in the know before the media, before everyone else gets wind of it. And then the employees and the people that work for the city are looking at us like, hey, council members, you all were spending money on XYZ and y'all knew this was coming up because a lot of times we are the last to know about stuff. And it just really makes us look bad. So if we can, just please keep us on, in the loop of things that are coming down the pipeline so that we can explain to some of the employees that we come in contact with so they know that for 100%, we all, meaning the staff in this council, have their back and want the best for them.
Thank you, Councilman Byrd. Councilman Smith, throw your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a little bit of a follow up. I also had some questions regarding furlough that have pretty much been answered. Just one point of clarification. Mara, do you guys know what is going to make that final decision? She said, I mean, we've been incredibly fortunate to both have the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, making sure that we're paying 100%, which is really great for our employees. Also understand you're, you guys are watching the bottom lines as well. But do we have a particular measurement that we're looking at? If things don't get better in a week, we're going to furlough, two weeks, we're going to furlough, three weeks? Do we have any idea yet of when we're going to end up having to make that, or you would end up having to make that more difficult decision?
We are, we believe that we are at a point now in the, in this budget year that we do not have to furlough employees for the rest of this fiscal year.
All right. And then following what Councilman Byrd said, I mean, I would definitely like the council to be part of that conversation because we are in charge of the budget, at least approving it. And, you know, if there were some difficult decisions to be made versus taking care of our people, I'm, I'm sure there's many of us that would like to have a say so in how that works. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Daisy, thank you. Beverly, good to see you. Thank you. Thank you for joining us and appreciate all the, the work that the entire team over there at HR has been doing to take care of our employees. I just had one follow up question for you.
Yes, sir.
Based on that Coronavirus Response Act, do we have very many employees that have basically left under that act or have been needing to go home due to temperature, due to potential symptoms? Do we have numbers of, of our employees? Or we just been that lucky that everybody has been able to remain healthy?
Well, I would say for the most part, we've definitely been lucky that everyone's been able to remain healthy. Of course, you know, with anything, we've had lots of reports. I say lots of, there have been, there have been employees that have, maybe they have symptoms or they have a fever and they thought it could be COVID related, but ended up not being the case. Or employees that have thought that they could have been exposed to someone perhaps that had symptoms. But fortunate enough, all of the employees that I will say that is on a leave relative to COVID-19, it has nothing to do necessarily with an illness. It is either childcare or they're taking care of a family member. And so therefore they qualify under that expanded leave. And we have had a few that we've had to self-isolate until we've had results back in regards to either a test or we're able to rule out that their situation was not COVID related.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Great presentation. Ms. Beverly, it's great to see you. Just have a couple of questions. I heard you, you mentioned the PPE. So are our staff and particular public works, are they able to have enough masks to where they able to exchange them out often and not just once a week?
Well, I'm going to defer the question. I know that our public works, our employees that are working has PPE. But to the specifics of them, how often they're changing out, I will have to defer that to, to the administrator, Justin Holland.
Okay.
Well, Councilwoman, we're going to have Public Works Committee meeting here in just a few minutes. You want to just wait till he comes up then?
Yeah, that's fine. And then also, Ms. Beverly, are our workers getting hazard pay during this pandemic?
No, they're not. We're, we're just paying the hundred, we are paying them 100% regardless.
Okay. Thank you.
You're good. Councilwoman Byrd.
Well, thank you. I had lowered it, but I just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, that's okay. I'll, I'll go ahead. Let me make a comment. Mara and Daisy have been very forthcoming about the information relative to furloughs and all of that. And, and had made the decision that there wouldn't have to be any until the end of the year. So they weren't keeping council totally out of the loop. They, they have been including budget and finance. The real issue is going to come, I think, when we do next year's budget. Because then we'll have a better year, a better idea of how hard this is hitting us financially. We're doing everything we can to get everything back online again so that people don't have to suffer. But Anthony, I hate it when people get in fear of being furloughed and it was hearsay. And that's unfortunate. But I think Mara's and Daisy's answers were good and we're not going to have to do that. So please make sure people aren't in fear.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Ms. Mulchery, I do have one question for you before we move on and maybe a couple. I had asked about having our first responders tested that responded to the tornadoes out in the East Brainerd area. What can, do we have the capabilities of doing that, especially the ones that worked out of the command center there at Silverdale Baptist?
We, we don't have a full capability at the Well-Advantaged Center. That is what we're working on now. I know that as early as, earlier this morning, there were still communications going back and forth about trying to acquire tests so that that could happen at the Well-Advantaged Center. However, in the meantime, we do have a way to have them tested at the health department.
Okay, I think it's important that we get all of our first responders tested that, that responded to that crisis. And also, you mentioned the PPE earlier. And, and I'm sort of getting into our, our next agenda item, planning for reopening for the council. Our staff had made a request for, for their own PPE. Do we have, where, where would our staff get that so that when we do start coming in, our staff is protected and they have what they need?
So if they, if they would either just email me or contact Mike Anthony over at the Safety and Health Area, we have a centralized supply and we'll ensure that your staff has appropriate PPE.
Okay. Okay, very good. Councilwoman Coonrod, your hands up. Is that from previous?
Yes.
Okay.
I wanted to pick up what she said. And also, Councilman Byrd, is that the fact that so many people get the information prior to us? And I just asked that, you know, to be mindful of those Zoom meetings. Because a lot of, I've been a part of several Zoom meetings and constituents are on those calls. And they're getting information at nine o'clock Zoom meeting that everybody is having about, and if we're, council members aren't on those calls, they taking that information and running with it. And then we're finding out on Facebook and we're having a scrounge around to say, hey, is this, is this true? What's going on? What happened? And we're being asked, how did you know? Well, I wasn't on the call, but this is where the information is coming from. We've got to be really careful about that because as they elected us for a reason, right? And if we got to hear the information from our constituents first, like to me, that makes no sense. And then secondly, I got to agree with Councilwoman Byrd that, you know, Mara and Daisy, they're doing all that they can to make sure that we're not furloughing. And I agree that it's going to be the next year's budget that will be affected. But is there any way while we're in this crisis and pandemic that the entire council can be updated on anything regarding the furloughs or any, you know, anything that's going to have to take a harsh decision, a hard decision? So all of us can know through email because we may not see Councilwoman Byrd the following Tuesday where she can update us. So we hadn't had a committee meeting. Well, we got to wait, just like Councilman Byrd asked a question. But our Budget and Finance Committee was already in the know. Well, the ball got dropped because Councilman Byrd had no idea that it was even being discussed. So I would like for the entire council to be included through email if possible, please.
Was that, was that to Ms. Sullivan?
Whoever listening, everybody, whoever can send us the information. Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions for our panelists, Ms. Mulchery, Ms. Sullivan or Ms. Daisy Madison? Okay, great job, ladies. Thank you so much. Okay, next on our agenda is purchasing questions. It appears to me that we have no purchasing items at this time. So with that, I want to move into, I have a item on our agenda, COVID-19 planning for reopening. Many of you may know that the governor's executive order for allowing electronic meetings will expire on the 18th of May. And in order to make preparation, I think there's some things that we need to start considering and we need to start preparing for in order to come back to council chambers to have meetings. I have, I have talked to our clerk about having our council chambers, our building professionally sanitized, about having PPE for the staff to make sure that they're, they're protected as well. I would just kind of like to open it up and ask if you have any concerns. My target date for having our first regular chamber council meeting would be the, May the 12th. That would be basically one week before the governor's orders would expire. So that would be my target date. I think there's some things that we need to make sure of in, in our council chambers that we're, we are all at a safe distance. We'll probably have to limit the number of the public, of people that we have in our council chambers for the, for the time being. And maybe even look at how we arrange for staff to be in as well. Councilman Gilbert, then Councilwoman Coonrod. Councilman Gilbert. Yeah, I think you're muted, Councilman.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. Thank you.
I think one of the things that we're doing here is that we're wearing masks. Are we going to provide council with masks? Because where we sit at council is less than six feet apart. So are we going to do what, on that end? When someone come to visit our staff, my personal opinion, they need to just be on intercom and not go through the other door because you don't know who has the virus or not because you've not been tested. Our personnel have been tested and not. So we checked our staff. I think that they need just to have a voice outside that chamber to, for any questions.
Okay, you're talking about through basically the workday, just talk through intercom?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chair, would you bring up Mr. Messer? He is, he is on as an attendee. I do have a question for him. Councilman Gilbert, was that all that you had?
For right now, yes.
Okay, Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. I do have some concerns. One, because really the lack of education around this COVID-19. And we can be at our meeting on the 12th, like Councilman Gilbert said, that we don't know who has COVID. You, I could go get tested today and come back negative. Erskine can get tested. So we both can go at the same time. And then we go the following day, we both could be positive. Because the virus incubate in you for 14 days. Like we don't, we have no idea with the way that it's, you know, that it's going. We haven't reached peak yet. A lot of people haven't been tested. Some may not ever go get tested. But I think, is there anything, I guess my question towards Phil is that since the governor is saying, okay, we're going to go back to normal. On the 19th, he's removing his executive order. Is there anything in there that says that we can limit the amount of people that can come into our chambers? Does it say we have to open it up to people to come physically inside of our meeting? Are we able to communicate with our constituents through Zoom form if we're inside of the chambers? You know, those kind of things. Because I, I mean, I got grandkids and kids, foster children that I take care of. And I most definitely don't want to put myself in an unsafe environment to where I'm going to go back. And I have a grandmother that I often go see to where I'm going to subject them to the possibility of getting COVID. And for me to be the sole provider of all of these groups of people, like I have some concerns. Is there Phil, is there any way that we can ask the governor, can he extend it out for us to continue Zoom meetings or for those, a few people can be in the council chambers, some can be on the Zoom meeting? Because I've seen that's how our school board does it. That's also how our county commission does it. So what would excuse us from doing?
Currently, the governor, by his executive order 16, said that that can be done through May 18th at 12:01 AM Central District time in Nashville. Unless he extends that order, there's no provision for any public meeting to be done by electronic means. There was an attempt to get that done through the legislature, if you remember, but they ended up going home and not answering that question. And the governor issued the executive order. As of April the 27th, which I believe was yesterday, the Attorney General has also issued a written opinion at this point in time, basically saying that any emergency orders that might be issued by cities can't contraband. can't contraband what the Governor might have put in place. And unless you've got some sort of specific order from your Health Department saying that things are done in a certain manner, then that's really all you can do. The Governor has issued, at this point in time, general rules that he would talk about for guidelines for businesses opening back up. There's really not been a whole lot more than specific restrict guidelines and retail guidelines and general business guidelines. But those guidelines talk about, you know, things that you might be able to do. They do not include anything about limiting access to public meetings. I would argue that you have to have some ability to be able to conduct those in a safe manner. And hopefully, the Governor will allow that to continue so that at least you can continue to do that further. But that's, that's your authority right now. You have control over your council chambers, and you can do things in a safe manner in the council chambers, like spacing people out and limiting the number of folks that might be able to come in there based upon six-foot distancing. But I believe that's about all you got.
Okay, well, is there any way that you could reach out to our Governor or whoever? Ledford, I know y'all are good friends or whoever, because like this is important. Our health is important. I mean, I know we're, you know, we're elected by our constituents, but nothing in the oath that I took said that I'm supposed to be in unsafe areas to cause me to be not healthy.
Yes, ma'am. And, and we, we will try to get more guidance here. It's, it's causing us a little bit of a problem right now because you have to schedule in advance meetings that are coming up, and you need to know whether you can do so electronically or not. And there is a Planning Commission meeting that actually is going to be going on the 18th at 11 o'clock. That question has just come up here as to whether that can be done in an electronic format or not. And the notices that went out for that meeting says it'll either be done in person or electronically. So that's, that's where we are. And we need some advice from the Governors, and we'll reach out for that.
Hey, you good, Councilwoman? We lost, we lost your video. Councilman Burr, hang on one second, Mr. Messer, and I'll get to you in just a minute. Councilman Burr.
Thank you, Chair. Phil, into our Chairman, is there, what do we do at this point if we're looking to go back into the chambers? How to set up a plan to where first to protect Nicole, where maybe we start seating at the second row? So when she's sitting down and then skip every row with maybe two seats behind, between each person or three seats between each person, and we continue that process until the room fills up, or we can't fit anyone in? Is there something in writing or something that we can put down, some type of sketch we can use to make that happen?
I, I would suggest maybe getting the Fire Marshal involved because they normally handle the number of people that come to meetings, and they have an establishment of account of how many people can fit in that room. And you need to also do that based upon the current guidelines that are in effect with the CDC about how far they can be spread out.
Can we, how will we make that happen, Chair?
Councilman, I think what we can do is mark the seats that would be available for the public as they come in. And once that limit is reached, we'd just have to close the chamber doors. And it wouldn't be anything unlike what we do now. Once we reach capacity that the Fire Marshal deemed safe, we close the door and we don't let anybody else in. So I think, I, I think that would be along the same lines. What I had in mind, and this is what I was going to talk to Mr. Messer about, is having a limited number of, of council people on the desk, and then maybe having a, a larger table down where Ms. Gwen sits now, and maybe have some wireless mics that we would be able to sit some of our council people down on that level, but at a safe distance. Mr. Messer, would you mind unmuting your mic just a minute? And can you hear us?
I can, yes, sir.
Obviously. I think at this time, I believe we've only, we only have three wireless mics. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, three.
Is it a possibility that, will our system support more than three?
I believe it will. I'll have to find out for sure, but I can let you know.
Okay. And I think we would need probably maybe two more to, to make the numbers work out right. If, if we could come up with maybe another two wireless mics.
Yes, sir. We will look into that and see how fast we can get something.
Okay. And, and we'll, we'll stick our, our city attorney over in the next room or something, just so he can observe.
As long as it's six feet away, no problem.
Okay. Councilman Ledford, I see your hand. And then Councilman Gilbert, I guess you've, you've re-raised your hand. Okay, Councilman Ledford.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. I had kind of anticipated that question earlier about the Fire Marshal being involved. So the question that I'd asked Chief Hyman was that very same question. And yes, the Fire Marshal can help us determine the number of people, so.
Yeah. Good?
Yep.
Uh, Councilman Gilbert.
Yeah, Chair, I'll be going to write that in detail for advertising without the microphone and a lot of germs. I'm using my cell phone and you come up and speak.
Okay, hold on just one second. I'm having a real hard time understanding what you're saying. It's not any better. Uh, try that.
The mic that we use, and the mic that our guests come into our facility use, they have to be wiped off each time someone uses it.
The mic?
Yes.
Yeah.
But they hold germs, a lot of germs at normal.
Okay.
Are we going to allow the speaker to come on? If we do, then that mic has to be wiped off each time someone comes up to speak.
And I want to defer to Mr. Messer about how do you disinfect a microphone without causing damage to it?
You can use aerosol sprays and just wipe them down with one of the, like the Clorox disinfecting wipes.
Okay. Okay. All right, good, good question. Any other concerns that any council members have? Councilwoman Coonrod, did you have your hand back up?
Yes. I just, the clerks, if you can instruct our cleaners, they don't have to clean my office and the trash that I have. I'll sit it outside the door. Please do not enter into my office. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Burr.
Yes, Chair. I, I, when you spoke of the microphones, will our backs be faced to the crowd, and we will use the projector as our monitors? But when we're needing that, or would they have to put some type of monitor that we always share down at the table?
I, I, I think at this point, that's just some of the logistics that we're trying to work out. But, but, but that's the reason I was thinking maybe not starting till the 12th. That gives us basically two weeks from now to get all that worked out.
And one other question, Chair. Will we ask the people that are coming into the chambers and that are speaking at the mic, will we ask them to wear masks and gloves or hand them out to them when they come in?
I had spoken with our city attorney to find out, you know, what we could require them to do. You know, can we, can we do a temperature check? Do we have to require them to wear glass, mask? I think that's something that we're still checking into to see what kind of leadway we have there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. The, the Governor's general recommendation talks about temperature, you know, screening of employees, but it doesn't really talk about the public coming to meetings. And there really needs to be something out there about public meetings. And I don't think it's been issued by our Health Department or by the Governor's Office at this point.
Okay. I see no other hands concerning reopening our council for business. So with this, oh, we do have. Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Chairman. Also on this subject, if, if we want to reach out to Chief Hyman, I'm sure they will be more than willing to help us walk through the logistics on, on making sure this is COVID-appropriate.
Oh, absolutely. And that's one thing that we will make contact with.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. At this time, I don't see any other items. Well, let me just ask real quick, does anybody have any questions for our agenda for next week, for May the 5th, Tuesday, May the 5th agenda? Any questions on any of those items? I'm not going to go over each one. You can just look through and see if you have any questions. Councilman Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. It actually has to do with the committee meeting we're about to go into.
Okay.
But, but I tried to get, it's on the May 5th agenda. It has to do with Public Works, but it's listed under Economic and Community Development. We will be looking at 7D in next week's agenda within the meeting, the Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting.
That's right.
It's not on the Public Works and Transportation Committee agenda.
Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, if there's no other questions at this time, uh, oh, okay, Councilman, Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. I did have a question about, before you go in here. I know we discussed last week the police oversight ordinance. And, and I know you've seen a lot of different changes. Well, I, and I, Russell, I think he mentioned it as well. But we need to be reviewing what's actually is going to be on the ballot. That ordinance that you sent in this amendment, that's not what's going to be on the ballot. So I, right, so I'd like to see what's on the ballot to be placed on the agenda. Every council person have had the updated version, what you've sent out, Phil. Our clerk done sent it out, it's done been twice. And we keep pushing it, kicking the can down, kicking the can down. And I'd like to see this get placed on the agenda so we can vote for it, or vote it up and down, however we're going to do. But what's going to be on the ballot has nothing to do with the ordinance that CHIL is sending in different amendments. We can still continue to do that, but we, the ballot portion of it, that's, that's what I would like to see placed on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am. I was trying to see where y'all were on this because it, it has been passed on a couple of times. I'm just trying to make sure we had the final changes to that so we can be done, and then we can go and do a shortened version for the ballot.
Right.
Phil, I do have one question about that then. It was my understanding that the ordinance had to be the way we wanted it in order to put it on the ballot. Is that, is that correct or not?
We are, we are simply going to put a shortened version so that the voters can vote on the aspect of it being in your charter on the ballot. So it doesn't have to be the entire ordinance.
In other words, it can be changed even after the ballot wording is on the ballot?
Well, I mean, the, the, the ordinance, the ordinance can be changed at any point, but the issue about whether there is in place Police Advisory Review Committee and how it is initially set up has got to be done in the, in the.
Okay. At, at one point, I had heard that it had to be as it was going to appear on the ballot, but that's fine.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. At this time, we will move into Public Works and Transportation. Councilman Mitchell, the chair is now yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. Can I get approval of the minutes, or do we just want to do the?
Do the shortened version. Just, no, no objections.
If there's no objections to the minutes being approved, we'll move on. Any objections? All right, thank you, Council. We're going to start with Public Works and the two resolutions for Tuesday, April 28th. That's today. Please read 8M.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the city of Red Bank, adjusting the boundaries in accordance with TCA Section 651302 for a vacant parcel of land adjacent to Pine Breeze Road, so that it will be maintained and be included in the corporate boundaries of the city of Red Bank. The effective date of this attached interlocal agreement forward.
I see no likes, but I do want to comment on Justin Holland's smile in that photograph. That's pretty outstanding. Where'd you go, Justin?
Rock star.
Um, if, okay, I, I see no hands, so we're going to move on to 8N, please.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter into a blanket agreement with Paradigm Software LLC for implementation, licensing, and supportive scanners and software for the Refuge, for the Refuge Collection Centers for user ID and tracking, beginning April 22nd, 2020, and ending April 21st, 2023, with the option for two additional one-year renewals and an annual spend limit not to exceed $35,000 the first year, reduced to a $5,000 spend limit the following contract year.
I see no hands, but I have a question for Councilperson Burr. Do you like the looks of this?
Don't know. I'll get back with you.
I'm just talking about the form it takes. Do you think we're covering ourselves and?
Yeah, the, the issue, all right. So Councilman, the issue is when the renewal comes up. So yes, this is fine. The next year, are we going to look at it again? We've gotten two answers. One has been there's automatic renewals if there aren't any problems. I like the new form better that comes to us and says they're bringing it to us implying that there aren't any problems for us to review. So yes, the answer is yes, except I'd like to see it come every year.
Okay. You got that, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much, Councilperson. We're going to move to next week, Tuesday, May 5th. And I'm just going to, I, I know we have some folks here. I'm not sure if they want to speak, but it's sort of linked. And again, it's, it's Resolution 7D under Economic and Community Development. And the way this has been structured is, is, is linked to 7G under Public Works. So Lydia or Madam Clerk, do you have 7D in, in front of you from next week's agenda that you could read it?
I, for next week, I have 7GHI and 8ONP.
Okay, I'll read it. 7D of, in next week's agenda, a resolution authorizing the Administrators for the Department of Economic and Community Development and Public Works to enter into a joint partnership agreement with the Community Foundation of Greater Chattanooga for project management services provided by the Public Works Department and the Public Arts Division, and the receipt of donations to support the site work for the Ed Johnson Memorial portion of the Walnut Plaza Project. Okay, now could you go ahead, because they are related, and read 7G that's on your agenda sheet?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to award contract number R19007201 to Thomas Brothers Construction Company of Hickson, Tennessee, Walnut Street Plaza, in the amount of $2,200,652.50, plus a contingency amount of $160,000, or a contract amount of $2,360,652.50.
Councilperson, obviously, this is your district, so I want you to take, take over. And of course, we have Justin here, and we've got some special guests that can speak to it also from, from different agencies. So please just take over and, and go with it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the conversation we had last week, I would like to hear that presentation of how this is going to all come together. So we're prepared to vote on it next week. So Justin, if you can provide me with the presentation that I understand was going to be presented today to give us an update and how we're going to move forward with this project.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. And I think the update is that after approval of this resolution, and the resolution, and the contract has been very well coordinated. There, it is a complex project with multiple funding sources and multiple partners involved, as well as an art project alongside a previously planned Walnut Plaza. The, really, the, the next step for us is to initiate the contract. It's a, we would start around the first week of June. The project would last about eight months and should finish around the first part of February. It is site prep for the Ed Johnson Memorial. We are overseeing, Public Works Department would be overseeing that that site preparation, as well as the Walnut Street Plaza portion of um, as well as the Walnut Street Plaza portion of the co- of the contract. Um, and that is, um, for us, the, the extent of what we are doing next is initiating a contract following approval of this resolution that we've, uh, the, the joint resolutions that we've put forth, both the Thomas Brothers contract and the, um, the con- the resolution and agreement for, with, uh, to partnership with Community Foundation.
Okay. And I, I understand. I know Caitlin and Mr. Threokil is here. So let's talk about that coordination of the funding, because I think that was one of the issues, uh, we had last week. And it's my understanding, uh, want, require some explanation this year so my colleagues can feel comfortable moving forward, uh, next week with the vote.
Mr. Holland, do you, do you need, uh, uh, you need some help from Public Art or the Ed Johnson folks right now?
So it, it, I can, I can speak to what the funding looks like. And then beyond that, if there are questions, I wouldn't want to yield possibly those questions to, uh, my partners. But the Walnut Plaza, uh, was a previously planned capital project. There are approximately, uh, $780,000 that are included from general fund, um, uh, for that part of the project. And then there are external funding sources, uh, to about 1.2, 1.3 million dollars uh, from River City Company and Public Art, uh, and as well as about approximately $290,095 from Ed Johnson and Ed Johnson Foundation, I think is, or, um, committee. And the Community Foundation has been the, the vehicle to accept and move that money to the city as the committee was not actually a, um, like, sort of a legally defined group. The Community Foundation has facilitated that, uh, funding to the city. That is, um, that is what I can speak to about it. There are also other, other funding partners. I, I want to mention is, uh, Ben Wood and Lynn Hur- Lynn Hurst Foundations have also been involved in this project. But, uh, I will yield to additional questions and see if I can answer those or yield to my partners who would be able to respond.
Well, well, let me ask, let me ask this about the funding. Is all the funds in hand that needs to complete this project with the contingencies in hand now?
Uh, let me yield to Justin Steinman, our capital planning, um, uh, director. If Justin Steinman is on the call, and I believe he is, uh, would you, councilman, allow him to speak?
Yeah, absolutely. Whoever can answer the question.
Hi, Councilman Oglesby. This is Justin Steinman. Um, the, all of the hotel motel funds, which are, are the city's funding, is all in hand. The money from River City, which is basically money from Lynn Hurst and Ben Wood that we'll be receiving, we will receive on a, a schedule. Um, it has been committed from them. It's part of their overall public realm enhancement fund that they're using to pay for other things, including Miller Park and Patton Parkway. And then the Ed Johnson dollars are, that, that's why we wanted to have this agreement in, uh, executed before the contract was approved, because those dollars currently are not budgeted. And so we wanted something in hand that would provide, uh, legally binding documentation as to the fact that we'll be receiving that $290,000 from them.
When you say it's not budgeted, what do you, exactly what does that mean?
Um, yeah, my apologies. In the FY20 capital budget, we didn't know at the time that we, that we would need to receive those funds directly from Ed Johnson. So we will amend that in FY21 capital budget. Um, but as far as the overall project budget, that component that is Ed Johnson is, uh, something that, the, the way we're documenting that until the capital budget's amended is through this collaboration agreement.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Justin, uh, Holland. Okay, let's go back to this June start date. Is there anything that can prohibit, uh, the start of this project, uh, in June? Is everything in hand? What my biggest theory is that where, where I hear June and this project has been going on for quite some time. I know I embraced it, uh, the day I took office. So, uh, where are we at with the actual start date? Does any contracts have to go out to bid? Or is everything in hand? You know, let's, let's talk about that a little bit.
Sure. Next steps would be a pre-construction meeting. Uh, we are planning and we've had some conversations with our contractor. Obviously, since, um, since the, um, bids had been awarded, there was some value engineering that had, uh, been a part of this. And we are planning on a June 8th start date, uh, finishing around February 8th of 2021, more specifically. There are many things that could, um, obviously slow down the construction, uh, weather, uh, and, and a number of, um, of other, uh, things that could interfere with that. But that is our plan for right now and we don't anticipate any, uh, interruptions in that plan.
Okay. Is, is, is any disrupting factor into that eight months? Now, I know that, uh, other things can happen, but typically during projects like this, those things are factored, delays are factored in as, as much as possible. Uh, are those delays calculated into these eight months? So anything beyond that would be extraordinary?
We do build out a critical path in, in our project planning, so we do know what the schedule should look like. And we also have a can, a fair amount of contingency in this project built in. So we should be, um, we should be right on schedule. It's a, it's not a very complex project. The funding portion is very complex, but the project itself is not a, uh, an overly complex project. So I can get additional details of that project plan to you. Uh, do not have it, uh, to, to share with you right now, but I can certainly share that with you. And if you'd like, share it with other council members.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I see, uh, Mr. Chair, I see, uh, Councilwoman Coonrod has her hands up, so I, I'll yield to her. And if I have a follow-up, I'll raise my hand again.
Okay, now I'll, 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 I'll take it back and, and I'll go right to councilperson Coonrod.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, is there any reason why we're not able to connect with Ed Johnson to secure the $290,000 from them?
Uh, Councilwoman Coonrod, I will yield to Justin Steinman, the capital planner, who's been working on the funding sources.
Councilwoman Coonrod, this is Justin Steinman. No, we, we are, we have been in communication with Ed Johnson as well as the Community Foundation as far as receiving those funds. So there's, there's no obstacle to receiving them. Um, and that's why we, the collaboration agreement is important because it will outline the different responsibilities of Ed Johnson, the Community Foundation, and the city in regard to receiving those funds and then managing that portion of the project that falls under Walnut Plaza. Um, the whole intent here has been to try and basically help the preparation of the site for the art, because the cost to per- prepare the site, if it wasn't part of this larger project, would be significantly higher and would put, I think, a pretty significant strain on the Ed Johnson Group's, um, available funds.
So are we able, do we have any additional funds in our budget floating around that can go towards this project?
Floating, buddy?
Floating around, just waiting for somebody to say, hey, put it over here.
So now, in the capital budget, as you know, you know, every, all of the funds that we have that have been appropriated, have been appropriated through, uh, various capital budgets that you all have approved. I will say the public art funds are, public art, the Public Art Commission, and Caitlin can speak to this more in more detail, but has agreed to cover can, any contingency as, for the Ed Johnson portion up to $50,000. Um, and then we also have commitments from some of the foundation funding partners to cover an additional amount if, if the contingency were to be exhausted.
Okay. So June 8th, would, nothing is prohibiting or stopping or any issues will be arising. June 8th, we're starting on this project is what I'm hearing, right?
I can't speak to the detail of at what point. So Walnut Plaza is the project we've been talking about, the timeline. Obviously, Ed Johnson, they will, they are going to be working on art fabrication and other pieces while Walnut Plaza is underway. I'm not sure what exact date in that timeline that the Ed Johnson folks can actually get started. It may be sooner than the completion date of Walnut Plaza. I'm not sure, because that will require some coordination between the different contractors and the artists to make sure that everything is in place where it needs to be and that nothing could be done that might damage the artwork. Um, Caitlin can probably speak to that in greater.
Yeah, councilperson, can I try to help out here?
I mean, I, I just, I'm gonna say one last thing, Mitchell, is that really I'm getting frustrated with it. This project continuously being put off prior to us coming on council and now while we're on council. I just would really like to see it done while our, our mayor is still in office, if that's possible to make happen. Uh, I know that may be asking a lot, because I kind of feel like when June 8th come, we're gonna say, hey, we're gonna defer it. But if we are gonna defer, I would like to know ahead of time, not when we come to our agenda session meeting. So I can get prepared for it, not just to get a little sting on the day of that we're supposed to move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay. I, I, I can feel your frustration. That's why, um, Mr. Steinman?
Yes, sir.
It sounds to me like we are still working out an agreement with the Ed Johnson folks. And so my question would be, one, do we have anything at this time in writing? And two, would the council need to approve that agreement? And maybe Mr. Attorney can comment on that, but I'm gonna ask you first.
Yes, and that, that agreement is what is referred to as, I, I'm sorry, I don't have my agenda in front of me, but is the ECD item that we're talking about right now. Um, it is nearly in final form. There have been, that, it's been being sent back and forth between the attorney for the Community Foundation and the city attorney's office. Um, and I, so I don't anticipate any problem whatsoever in it being ready for next week's meeting.
And Mr. Attorney, when that agreement is in place, will city council need to take another action on that or will this resolution next week take care of that?
I believe this resolution will resolve that as long as we can get the agreement signed here in the coming week. That's what you're authorizing today here, us to get that document completed.
So we're actually, actually the fifth will be, uh, hopefully authorizing it. Okay, um, I, I, thank you, Mr. Steinman. I have a question, uh, for Caitlin. Can is, can you get her on? Well, there she is.
Hello?
Hey, Caitlin, can, can, can you add a little bit more, um, depth to, obviously, the site work is being done or will be done if this passes by Thomas Brothers Construction. Then the artwork needs to be placed. And of course, I guess that's when we get the artist in and choose it. That work starts in June. What is your timeline looking like for the artist beginning and all the way up to the artist finishing? So we can all gather up there at that happy day like we had, I don't know, three or four years ago. Uh, I can remember walking up there from the council offices and, you know, everybody holding hands and it was big kumbaya. And councilperson Coonrod, don't start laughing at me because I'm gonna use the word diverse. But it's, 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 it's just, what do you, what do you, what are your ideas of a timeline for the art to actually be installed?
Well, I just wanted to also clarify, you know, the Ed Johnson committee has had a significant fundraising goal that has been underway, um, the whole time, even as they were selecting an artist for this project. So, um, they have completed their fundraising and, um, the artist is already underway. So the Community Foundation is under contract with the artist. We have, uh, an intent to donate agreement, um, that the Public Art Commission is a- approved. And, um, we've got everything worked out in terms of what the artist is responsible for. So the artist is fabricating this piece in his studio as we speak. The, the aspect that we're waiting on is, of course, the site. So, um, you know, as the, um, Public Works, uh, as the GC gets finished up, um, on the site work and it becomes safe for the artist's team to begin installing both the, um, pavers and the soft scape, the stone walls, um, the reading walls, uh, they'll begin their work. So, um, again, I, you know, wh- once the GC is on board and they have their timeline worked out, we will coordinate really closely with the, between the artist's design team to figure out when they can get in there. But, um, the artworks, the, the bronze sculptures themselves are already, um, being created. Uh, so as soon as the site's ready, the design team should, uh, should be able to mobilize and, and get those installed.
Okay. And Mr. Holland, are you gonna let those artists on site before the eight months and the site work's done?
Uh, Councilman Mitchell, um, Dennis Malone is on to discuss any details about the, the schedule. Uh, he has that schedule, um, available. Can I allow Dennis to speak to how the coordination in the construction would actually work?
Uh, it depends on Vice Chair Smith's ability, I guess. This is complicated, Councilperson Coonrod. It's very complicated. It's gonna be worth it though, I hope.
Come on.
Yes, you are.
Okay. Uh, good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon.
Good to see all of y'all. Uh, yes, uh, way the contracts worked out is, is that there is a cooperation between our GC and the, uh, uh, the artist to be able to do their work. Uh, just as part of the GC contract, the way that the site come together, uh, it was required our GC to, to build a wall that had to be, has to be tore out for their work. So, um, once the wall gets built and we get up to the grade level, um, and especially in the portion that is the area where the sculpture and the, uh, will be going, there will, we will be able to, uh, allow them to come on site and work with us together. Now, the whole project is supposed to be about an eight-month project. Can't really address right now because we haven't received a, a schedule from them as to what date that would be that they could start coming on board and be on site to start their installations. But as we get into awarding and then into a project schedule for the whole project, we can work that out, uh, in the front end of when they would be able to come on site.
Okay, thank you. So, so Caitlin, we can trust in you that you will push the artists every chance you get. Fully realizing it's artists, but, uh, well, we, we, it, it just sounds to me like the council would really like to see this done and dedicated before at least some of us sail off into the sunset next April.
We'll do our best. Um, you know, the, the artist has a full team, so he has a, a, a mason and a landscape architect. So, um, they, they will be fully capable of, of pulling off of what needs to happen to get that memorial in place. So we'll just pray for good weather and, um, for, for things to move along, um, as planned as quickly as possible.
Any more questions from Councilperson Coonrod or, um, Oglesby?
Yeah, I do. Uh, what I'm hearing is a lot of moving parts. Uh, as, as with all the projects I've been involved with, who is or what entity is ultimately responsible for putting this all together? Because this is really making me nervous. I'm, you know, as, as the conversation grows, you know, there's, there's a lot of things being involved. I'm hearing there are schedules. And then I'm hearing that there's some more schedules be formulated. Who's ultimately responsible for coordinating this project?
Public Works is responsible for the construction project, which is the main project here. And we will be coordinating with both the, uh, the artist and with our GC to, uh, get the project done.
So in other words, it's you?
Yes, you can, you can put that on me.
All right. Thanks, Dennis. I feel, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Councilperson Coonrod, your hand is still up?
Yes, I was just gonna ask, is it any way possible? Um, I know we all just solely concentrate on the fact that Ed Johnson was lynched from the Walnut Street Bridge, but there were other people that was hung from this bridge. Is it any way that we can include their names somewhere, um, within, with this art? We can have it in a plaque on the side of the sculptures or whatever, but I think the others should be honored as well. It's not just about Ed Johnson, right? I know he's the, the main one that we're, we're saying, but there were five, six other people that was, was hung from that bridge.
Is, is that question towards Caitlin?
Yes.
Can speak to that. Um, yeah, so, um, Jerome's artwork not only honors Ed Johnson, but his two African-American attorneys, um, their valiant efforts, as well as the three other individuals that were lynched from the Walnut Street Bridge. So, um, those are all, um, figure forms and the, the other three- So those are all figure forms and the, the other three that were lynched are, are represented a little bit more abstractly down the hillside. I can pull up the design if you, you wanna be refreshed on what that looks like to share. But I also just, Mary Ann Martin, who's the project manager on the Ed Johnson side, just notified me that those sculptures are complete. Well, they will be complete next week. So that's just to say, there has been a lot of progress on this project. You're just not seeing it on site yet. But yes, to answer your question, we will, the artwork does acknowledge all, I guess, six, you know, African Americans as part of the, the overall memorial.
Okay, now with one other question. So with the artwork, it's just gonna be on that hillside, but is there anything that's gonna reflect what happened throughout history with the lynchings on the bridge, the actual bridge?
Um, not, I don't believe on the actual bridge itself, but you, you will have and the, the whole memorial site that takes up, you know, the whole space adjacent to the bridge will tell, tell those stories.
Yeah, I would love to see one day the history told on that bridge. It's a lot, it's a lot, but I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, maybe we can work on something to achieve audio or, or something like that, that somebody could actually do a tour and, and get that information. All right, um, do we, Councilman Oldsby, do you wanna hear from any of the Ed Johnson folks? Or does he, you know, I mean, or are you okay right now?
Um, well, I, I know they showed up. If they would like to say something, I would love for them to give their, their view and their enthusiasm. So, yeah.
If they would like to say something, you want, Vice Chair, you want somebody to raise their hands?
Ken, you're muted.
Mr. Chair.
You're, you're muted.
Yes.
I'm gonna have to leave the meeting so that I can get home for the six o'clock. So I'm gonna be leaving the meeting now. The only issue that I have on the agenda is under transportation for next week and there are no questions.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, see you guys at six.
See you again soon.
Mr. Chair, I have no other hands raised at this time.
If not, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, if you're good, I'm good.
I just wanna thank Caitlin for all her work on this project because she's been doing a phenomenal job working with the, the artists and, and the rest of the group that's part of the Ed Johnson Foundation. So, uh, thank you all and we're really excited to get this thing moving forward, starting June 8th. That's all I have, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Then quickly, even though I, I, I know I'm pushing right up against the wall for Councilman Ledford, I guess we need to read seven H, please, for May 5th.
A resolution to amend number 30145, correct the business name from Waterways, formerly Caribbean Seas Incorporated Caribbean Student Environmental Alliance, to Waterways D B A Caribbean Sea.
I see no hands, I please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to execute a consent to assignment of all purchase orders for vendor number 862397, DACA Specialty Services to Mansfield Industrial, relative to purchase order number 546382 for painting services.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Holland or anything that has to do with Public Works before we move on to transportation? No? Okay, then we're gonna move to transportation. Yes?
Was Justin giving us an update on debris pickup today?
Oh, you know what? I see that and I, I was, I'm sorry, I got in a hurry trying to help you, Councilman, but.
Nope, we're good.
I guess I can't help you, yeah. Mr. Holland was gonna give us an update on the progress of debris cleanup in the storm areas.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There has been a lot of progress made to debris cleanup. As you know, our staff were there the first night of the tornadoes and they haven't left since. We have so many people that I could thank for making that operation go smoothly from the people who organized it to the people who've written contracts, to organizing and orchestrating things with Fire and Police Department, all the way to our crews, cutting things, moving things, helping people and clearing roads. So thank you for recognizing that work. They have cleared over 23,000 cubic yards of debris from roads and neighborhoods and parks. That was our priority is to get infrastructure back open. As we move into a recovery phase now, public crews, public work crews are still working in affected areas, clearing some of the debris, but we've moved a lot of that debris to the side of the road and we're now collecting debris from private property and collecting debris that we've cut and pushed off to the side of the, of that, of the roads. We cleared miles of, of roads and through neighborhoods and connector routes. We worked with finance last week, the attorney's office and mayor's office, and purchasing to quickly get a contractor to Chattanooga that would help us in the recovery efforts under an emergency purchasing protocol. This contractor began work just this past Saturday and since they've collected about 37,000 cubic yards of debris in three days. In total, we've collected about 62,000 cubic yards of material from the roads and private properties. We continue to do that to, and we continue to do that and align ourselves with everything we can to make sure that our FEMA reimbursements are coordinated amongst all the city departments and to make a smooth transition to recover funds that we've expended in that, in that disaster area. So while we were allowed to initiate some of those contracts quickly to help us recover, you will see, and those were during emergency protocols, you will see on the coming agendas, another contract that will be competitively bid in accordance with FEMA requirements. The first contracts were quotes and I wanna make sure that there's not, there's not any confusion. We strictly have to make sure that everything that we do is aligned with FEMA requirements in order for us to recover our, the, the funds, the massive amount of funds that it takes to collect this amount of debris. Our city crews have been, and all of our resources have been in this area for over two weeks. We still have a few crews there, cutting kind of the, the outlying areas that, that were affected more mildly. But we still have some city crews working there. We have resumed our normal operations in bulk trash and brush collection and it will take us weeks to recover from an abundance of calls. We have over 7,000 calls for bulk trash and brush collection throughout the city that have stacked up. At the, the time of the tornadoes, we had less than 1,500 calls for collection. And so you can see how the tornadoes didn't just impact that area, but the high winds impacted the entire city. People have been home doing long work and, uh, so we have a significant amount of work ahead of us just throughout the city. So our city crews have begun to recover the city's normal operations as well and they are still working long hours and many days through the week. That is an update as of now and I'll be happy to update the council in, at our next Public Works Committee or at any time, and I've filled in calls from several of you. Thank you, Councilman Mitchell and Councilman Ledford, happy to help your district.
Yeah, yeah, Justin, I'll tell you what, I would like to see that. Let's just make that a part for, for the immediate future until, until council cries uncle. Let's go ahead and get an update every two weeks in the, in the, as far as the cleanup and, and the great stuff that you all are trying to accomplish. I know that for a fact, I have a couple of neighbors close to me that have had stuff sitting out for quite a while and I'm asking them to be patient. Maybe, maybe a couple of other contracts for some companies to be helpful in other parts of the city. Or you guys know what you're doing, you guys make decisions on that. But I do have a hand here from Councilman Ledford.
Thank you, Chairman, just real quick, because I know we, we need to, to go forward with a special planning and zoning. But Justin, just real quick, thank you so much, each and every Public Works employee. We, we not only treasure them, we thank them from the bottom of our hearts. Talking to dozens and dozens upon dozens of people in the East Brainerd area, it is just phenomenal. I mean, you, you've, you've found a way to go far and beyond what anybody expected. And I think that just is, City of Chattanooga needs to be very proud and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Great, thank you, and thank you for your lovely background, the big shout out. And thank you to Public Works, it looks like a massive amount of work is happening right behind you.
Absolutely, we appreciate you very much, much love.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any more questions for Mr. Holland while we've got him?
He needs to get back to work.
Yeah, get out of here. Yeah, I, I, I see no, I see no more questions and so is that, Councilman Burr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Holland.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I sent you an email a little while back about some flooding issues. I know you've been truly, truly swamped with the things that are going on. If you can, can, we were being a call about some flooding over on Cannon?
Yes, sir, I have talked with staff about that. We are, I will get you an update. I did, I have not received the latest update. That was, I think, week of the tornadoes, so I will, I will certainly follow up.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Burr, any others? Before we get to Mr. Bailey, if Mr. Bailey's here, I haven't looked at the attendees lately.
Mr. Chairman, there was a question about our facilities and how we were gonna clean those and I did wanna make the council aware that we were going, that we would have an emergency purchase that would be coming to you for disinfecting of our facilities and cleaning of our buildings as we're backing into a plan of people returning and city buildings potentially reopening to some extent. We are making preparations and we are trying, we are working really hard, trying to be very calculated in our strategy to back into that and make sure that the facilities are clean. We've talked about it just as late as today and, and you should see an emergency purchase for some services that are a little bit expanded from our normal custodial operations and just wanted to make sure that you were familiar with that and then answer any questions ahead of time.
Bring it, that's all I have to say about that, bring it. Okay, anybody else? All right then, thank you, Mr. Holland, great, great work. All right, we're gonna move on to transportation. See if I can stretch this out for 30 minutes, so I deny Ledford that microphone. Uh, it, it's gonna be hard to do though, because we've only got two, two resolutions and they're both this week. So would you please read seven O?
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number two for C D M Smith, relative to contract number T 14039, for professional services associated with the valuation of and design services for the rehabilitation or replacement of the Stanifor Gap Road Bridge for an increased amount of $55,000 for a revised contract amount of $408,195.
Okay, while she's not here, let's vote against this tonight, what do you say?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, Mr. Navla, that's, that's liberating, isn't it? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They're in public.
That's a public, that's a health rep.
I, I take that back, I take that back, okay. I don't see any hands, all right, P, please.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into an agreement with Wood Environmental and Infrastructure Solutions Incorporated, relative to contract number T 20007 for professional services associated with the transportation asset management plan in the amount of $369,617 with a contingency amount of $28,621 for a total amount of $398,238.
I see no hands. Councilman Oldsby?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a question?
I have none.
Oh, okay.
Anderson.
Anderson's hand, I must have been imagining things. Councilman, Chairman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I'm excited and I am excited about getting this underway, it's something that we've pushed for, for several years now. One thing that, that struck me when I was going over our agendas today is, is this item and there's another item under ECD 8C. We're gonna be spending quite a bit of money and I think both of these perhaps are out of town firms. I, I guess to the administration and to Mr. Bailey, I, you know, I guess my comment would be, in our economic times such as they are with contracts as big as this, I, I would like to see us push to be able to hire local contractors so that our dollars stay in Chattanooga and they repurpose. I think it will make a more meaningful impact. I did, I was able to visit a, a couple of residents out in East Brainerd yesterday and the, the two residents that I went to both asked me if I was local. Appreciate them asking me that question and wanting to keep those dollars in Chattanooga. And I think it'll make more of a, an impact on our, on our city if we would concentrate on being able to hire local contractors, at least during this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman, or Mr. Chair, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything we can do to try to help assure that, what he just said?
Well, in, in this case, I'm, I'm looking at the, the contract that is involved. It is a Nevada corporation, it's Wood Environment and Infrastructure Solutions. The, the issue, I guess, in, in connection with this is they also do have a consultant who is here in Chattanooga on Market Street. So that, that's the other aspect of it here locally. And I, I do not know, it, it has the professional engineer who is locally located here in Tennessee. We are not allowed, as I understand, to deal with professional engineering services to make locality decisions. It's supposed to be someone that is a licensed contractor in the state and a licensed engineer. So that, that's the question of the professional services. I have not been involved in what all they're gonna be doing here, but he does have a P E.
Well, is it not true, Mr. Attorney, that in our specifications, we can, I don't know if requires a little strong of a word, but strongly suggest local partners to work on the project?
We can, we can request it, yes, whenever possible, yes.
Okay, all right, that's about as far as I wanna go on that.
I believe that's about as far as you can get, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for bringing that up. I think it's, it's a great idea. Mr. Bailey, you wanna say something tonight?
I'd be happy to, just to address appreciation of that question. I also agree, and one thing that Mr. Navla did mention that the, the consultant has a local presence, that's true. Part of the reason that they, they were among, I think, nine consultants that, that presented proposals that ranged, that ranged quite a bit in terms of the scope. And they, this firm actually not only has a local presence, but also has done significant work here. So I, I think, I think that, I think this, this firm does satisfy some of the need for local that some, some of the other proposers did not. And we always look for local relevance as it relates to the scope of work that we're asking for, to the extent that we can legally procure in that way. So I, I really appreciate that and agree with it. We're excited, we're excited to get started as well.
Thank you, Councilperson Coonrod?
Unmeet your mark.
Thank you, Chair, great question, Chip Henderson, but I would like us to go a step further with that, not just during this pandemic and emergency of what happened with the tornado, but even past that. If we're gonna push for local hire, we, we need to just do it. Like, don't just say because of this situation, we need to be, we brought this up, even dealing with the way of this, and we were told, no, we can't do that. Even before, when I brought up about other opportunities, we were told, no. And maybe, you know, I'm, I'm not the right, my hair ain't as thick as Chip's, so maybe I can't get my ass through, you know? I ain't got much of a bang, but I would like to see it enforced across the border for everybody local hire in our request, not just limited to an emergency. I totally agree, it needs to be done, people are hurting now, they were hurting before the pandemic. They were hurting before the pandemic, hurting before the tornado. They still are hurting. So we need to, um, you know, if we can, whatever we can do, continue to push for local hire.
And, and I think my answer will still be, no, we can't do that, uh, regardless of who asks in that regard. We'll try to do the best we can about urging, but that's, that's about the best we can do.
Right. It's a state issue. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you both. Uh, Councilman Byrd?
Uh, yes, Blythe, uh, definitely, uh, thanks for the work that you got going on and you're doing in our communities. Uh, I haven't heard, uh, anything about Wilson Street. Uh, I'm still out here doing some work on some homes, and cars are flying up and down the street. Uh, two kids almost got hit, uh, Saturday, and, uh, I just would like to get another set of speed bumps out here. Uh, we have one down closer to the daycare, but up toward, uh, Dotson. We really need one, and was gonna see if the distance was okay, if we can make that happen. Uh, we really, really need to make that happen.
Yes, sir. I did speak with our Director of Operations, and it sounds like, um, I need to check back with him, but it sounds like we think we can add a, a set of speed humps, but let me get back with you on that. I'll make a note to, to remind him to, to let me know.
Thank you.
A final answer on it when we can get it done.
Thank you. I'm hugging you. Thank you if we can make that happen, sir.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, uh, let's see. Well, Councilperson Coonrod, your hand's still up. You, you got something else?
Oh, thank, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, uh, Councilman Byrd. So, Blythe, so we bypassing the process now with, uh, getting signatures, talking to the community, making sure you send an engineer out there to check to see for speed bumps, or we just make a request, and you go, you putting speed bumps out?
No, ma'am. Um, I, 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 um, I should say, sorry, Mr. Councilman Byrd, we can't put an extra set of speed humps on your street. I, I'm just kidding. Um, uh, our, our, our Director of Operations had already looked at it. He had, and, and there were, they already did the signatures. They already went through the process. Uh, we normally do not add speed humps because what we recommend is based on spacing. In this particular case, we put in one set initially, feeling like it would do the job, but could have put in two. So we had already done all the analysis and all the process, um, but I will verify that and get back directly with Councilman Byrd. But with, there, there is still a process to, to require that all the folks in the, on the street that live there and nearby want the speed humps and to shut their, their, actually do something, because we don't wanna, we don't wanna put them in if, if we don't think they're gonna be effective.
Right. I'm just making sure to protect my, my brother here, because we got folks on here from the media of making it seem like, oh, he just made the request. So I needed them to know that there's a process to this thing. Um, but I do have a question about here on the three week, the outlook here about, uh, eight and nine for the HH Wright Memorial Parkway. What, what part of District Nine, so is it going all the way to the other end of North Orchard Knob?
Oh, that is between, um, Citico and, I don't remember, the, Councilman Byrd, remember?
Milleney Street.
Yes, thank you, sir.
So I don't think this, that's nine. I'm not included in that part. Yeah, I was, because I, I was about to say, I hadn't spoke to anyone about that. But yeah, that's all you, Byrd. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, I don't see any other questions. Mr. Bailey, uh, I heard a rumor that some paving started this week.
It did, uh, Councilman. I, I notified, um, the representatives in each of the districts that our paving is scheduled to start in, which is how we do it. Um, and we had a couple of streets go act, I think one street go active yesterday, and we are active. We, we will, um, add a couple of streets to our two-week list here in the next few days, and I will endeavor to make sure I notify council persons in advance so that they know when the repaving projects are coming.
All right, that's, that, that's good. I'm gonna actually change your forum just a little bit and notify the chairman of the Public Works and Transportation Committee also.
I'd be happy to, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that's great. That's great. Uh, and, uh, is there anything else? I know that you probably don't wanna share a schedule per se because of weather and things fall behind, but is there anything else that you can, about paving, that you can furnish the council either? Well, I don't want to do it right now and take up any more time, even though I'd love to go about another ten minutes, but, um, they, but is there anything in writing? Is there anything in writing you can share with the whole council so I'm not the only one getting informed, uh, kind of thing, or is it, or are we just, um, roll with it as you like to do it?
Um, I, I'll, I'll defer to what, what you want, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we, we share the information as a courtesy to council members, because we know how important paving is for each of you, so we, we don't do all the projects at once, so that just means that one or two districts gets an advance notice. If, if everybody wants that advance notice, I'm happy to provide it if that's what you're asking for.
Well, it's council's opinion. We're right here.
Love to know.
Okay. All right, well, it sounds like we got one person that would love to know, and I'm, I, I, being chair, I'd love to know.
Okay.
Okay, that's about all I can get out of them. Okay, if there's nothing else from Mr. Bailey, um, I guess we'll, uh...
You're killing me, Chair.
I guess, I guess we'll adjourn to, uh, to the, uh, special call planning meeting. Thanks, Blythe. Good job.
All right. Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to a special planning and zoning committee meeting. John Bridger is already on deck. We're gonna do this really quick, because really, uh, John, you have about a three-minute presentation. I think the, the end of this presentation, what we're really looking forward is, are we comfortable enough to move this onto Planning Commission in June, and that's really what we're, what we're getting at. So John, I'm gonna let you go ahead and take, I think you believe you have a short slide deck for us.
Yes, and I, actually, I'll, I'll, just for sake of brevity, I'll maybe skip that.
John, let me do the minutes real quick. I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll approve.
Thank you. John?
I just did give a quick recap. I think at our, at our last meeting, we had, I think, two questions or concerns. One was not making sure the changes that we proposed did not increase the number of staff variances. Uh, the second was just some clarification on the economic impacts. Uh, I looked at all the listed code changes, and really only one of them increased staff variances. That was the transparency requirement, and I've come up with a modification that I'd be happy to send to you all, that basically just makes it a code change instead of a staff approved variance. Um, so my, my thought would be, uh, since we got a, a full thirty days before this goes to PC, um, I would be happy to follow up with any council member individually, if they got a question or concern about a proposed code change, so maybe I'll stop there. If there's anything they want to make, make note from my attention, I'll be sure to follow them individually between now and June.
Okay, so basically, what we're trying to, to accomplish here today is if we're comfortable with, go ahead and moving this on to Planning Commission for the June meeting, and if anybody has, uh, any particular items they'd like to address, this will come back to us, correct, John?
That's right. It'll be, so there'll be two public hearings before you all take final action. Be Planning Commission, and then it'll be back on your dais in July.
Gotcha. So if anybody has anything in particular, if not, I would ask you to please reach out to Mr. Bridger with your specific concerns, and if that's okay with council, I would go ahead and move this on to Planning Commission in June, and knowing that this will come back to us, there will be two public hearings. So the opportunity to make changes, edits, comments, uh, is still available. I'm not seeing, uh, Councilman Mitchell, is that your hand up?
Yeah, 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 it is, Mr. Chair. It was a simple question, and it was basically, but if you, if you want to go with the, the premise that we're gonna touch it again, and maybe if we have to make some changes, but I was just gonna ask the deadline for getting it on the Planning Commission agenda for June.
John?
Yes, it would be on the, at the regular scheduled PC meeting, so that would be, uh, it's the second Monday in June.
No, but what's the deadline for getting on that agenda?
Oh, um, I'm sorry, I see what you're saying. That would be, our mail-out is like the Thursday, uh, so it's be like the last Thursday in May.
Okay, and you're, John, you're gonna, you're gonna send us, um, the particular instance you were talking about, about the, about, uh, the, the, uh, ordinance or statute or whatever you want to call it?
Yes, and I'll, I'll send you again the list of changes.
Okay.
So you all can review that, and feel free to follow up with me if you got a question or concern. Uh, I think the, probably the biggest thing just to look at was, you know, we looked at the Form-based Code Committee structure, which I think we tried to make that more streamlined, so it would help with appointees. I know it's something you all had a role in helping establish, so if you have any questions about that, feel free to follow myself or Richard Bealan. Um, but that's, everything else is pretty much cut and dry. Um, so again, we're here to answer any questions you have. I'll send it out to you again, and just be sure to reach out to us if you have, if a question about a particular change.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this special edition of Planning and Zoning?
The shortest on record.
The shortest on record. All right. If not, so, Mr. Chairman, I would adjourn us until six PM if no other questions.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you.